Okay, we'll call the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority a special January 22 meeting to order. There are no items. Oh, yes, there's one item from the chairman, which is the Central Oklahoma Long Range Transit Plan Project Update. Jesse?
Yeah, so this is pretty exciting for us. If you remember, this is one of the MAPS4 initiatives to come in, take a look at our long-range transit plan. So if you think about the, our plan that we initiated back in 2004, the Fixed Guideway Study, that kind of set the stage for the next 30 years. And this is what this plan is going to do, is going to come in, take a look at our existing plans, think about our future, and essentially set the stage for public transit in Central Oklahoma for the next 30 years. We've got Luke here to present for us.
Thank you, Jesse. Excellent. Well, thank you all for having me here today. I really appreciate it. My name's Luke Schmidt with the Killmead Horn team. I'm excited to give you an update on the Central Oklahoma Long Range Transit Plan. Today, we're going to talk about a few things. We're going to give a quick project overview, talk about the vision and goals, and then dive into the project schedule so you can see what to expect coming up in the coming months. So first and foremost, this plan is made up of many different project leads, operating partners, and also government partners. And as Jesse mentioned, this is really building on all the great work that's been done over the last 20 years with the Fixed Guideway Study, the regional transit dialogue, and all the different planning efforts done by the different operating partners. And most recently, the work with Embark and MAPS4, as well as RTA, with multiple high-capacity transit corridors throughout Central Oklahoma. So we're really building on all the great work that's been done. One exciting thing about this project, too, is there's funding both from MAPS4 as well as ACOG. So the intent is this long-range plan will then be rolled into the NPO's plan as well, which makes a lot of these transit projects competitive from a funding standpoint at the federal level. So really excited, the work that's being done, how this is creating a vision for the future, and opportunity for potential funding. So a couple of things that we're going to be focusing on with the plan. First is the what. With that, we're going to be assessing local service and come up with a dynamic and proactive operations plan to really assess the future needs and opportunities in Central Oklahoma. The when is really focused on key recommendations for the different operators to achieve an integrated system across all of the cities in Central Oklahoma. And then the how is key investments to really support that long-term vision and goals of the plan. So with any great planning exercise, there's three phases that we're going to be focusing on. The first phase is the assess phase that we're currently wrapping up now. That's really just fancy for, we're going to understand the needs today and the needs in the future, and all the different planning efforts and how that feeds into the long-range transit plan. From there, we'll be rolling into the evaluate phase. We will be using the goals and objectives to define our evaluation framework and come up with scenarios and recommendations. And then the recommend phase is really what needs to be done over the next 20 to 30 years for the long-range transit vision. Couple of the key project outcomes with this project, first and foremost, is facilities and fleet and staffing. As a system grows, there's very specific needs, so this plan will be looking at that as well. We'll also be doing a risk assessment of opportunities and what growth, what comes with growth. With this plan as well, we'll be looking at costs and funding. We look at programmatic level costs for service expansion and what that could look like, potential operation and maintenance costs as well. We'll also be looking at future-proofing this plan as well. The Fixed Guideway Study has served Central Oklahoma so well over the last 20-plus years. The intent is really this plan is that next guiding document. So administrative updates, but really this starts to serve as the foundation of future transit. This plan will also be looking at phasing. How do we incrementally update or incrementally implement the plan? And then last but not least, we'll be performing a peer review of other communities similar to Central Oklahoma to look at how they integrate different communities and provide some recommendations related to that. So we're currently in the assess phase. We've wrapped up a lot of stakeholder interviews and had a great workshop in December to talk through all of the needs and priorities of the operating partners in cities. We're rolling into the evaluate phase, which is kicking off our public-facing element of this plan in the coming weeks. So now we want to dive into both the vision and the goals of the project that have been established so far. Through the great work and coordination with all the project partners, we've developed four major goals that'll be the driving principles for this plan. Providing communities with meaningful access to transit is one of those goals, really focused on current and future needs. Creating a compelling and reliable rider experience. This is really focused on interconnections and how we make those happen. Offering competitive service options. This is really focused on looking at both trans-dependent and choice riders. And then last but not least, utilizing resources effectively will be a really important part of this future plan. The other side of the goals and vision is the vision. So I want to hit on a few different things. The vision for this project includes both projects and service. Let's talk a little bit about projects. We've broken projects into three different buckets. The first bucket is resource projects. This is, these are projects that are either built or have funding allocated to them. So that's Northwest Rapid that's currently open. The short-term improvements for OKC Moves, as well as the Northeast and South MAPS4 BRT, which have significant funding and are proceeding through the planning and engineering process. Second bucket of projects are the catalytic regional projects. These are projects that will dynamically change the way people in Central Oklahoma think about transit and move across the different cities. So that's, projects like that include the North-South Commuter Rail Project that will dynamically change the way people are using the North-South corridor and how our service can look. Santa Fe Depot improvements, and thinking about that as kind of the center of all those high-capacity corridors. And then OKC Moves Long-Term Improvements are some other catalytic projects. And then last but not least, unconstrained regional projects are projects, you know, on a 15-year, all the way up to the horizon of this plan. Think of a lot of the RTA work with the east, the west, the airport corridors, as well as Northwest Rapid expansion and potential streetcar expansion. So that, those projects make up a 30-year vision for this, this plan. With all those high-capacity corridors, that provides a really significant opportunity to look at how local service complements those facilities. So with this plan, we'll be looking at service-type operations and facilities to support that reorientation of local service. Wanted to talk quickly about the project schedule as well. So we kicked off this process in late August, and we're currently wrapping up the assess phase, rolling into the evaluate phase. Throughout this process, too, with all of the investments of RTA, there's been significant in coordination with RTA as well, as we go through the planning process. And we anticipate that this plan will be wrapped up by the summer of this year. Couple of things on the horizon. We have our first public virtual town hall next Thursday, January 30th, over lunch. The project website, connectcentralok.com, has a lot of information on project updates, as well as the virtual town hall information to be able to join that meeting. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? I guess we have a schedule that would see at least a draft report by summer.
That's right.
That's great. Okay. If there aren't any, well, thank you very much, Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to residents to be heard. There are none. Moving on to item four, which is approval of our minutes from the December 6, 2024 COPTA board meeting. Is there a motion? In a second, please vote electronically. Would you like to vote? Jason votes yea, so motion passes. Moving on to item five, which is our consent docket. There are three items on the consent docket. Were there any of them that would like to be pulled and spoken to individually? If not, is there a motion to approve our consent docket? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Items for individual consideration. Item A is to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the administrator to advertise forbids for our project for the renovation at Embark Administrative Building. Jesse?
Yeah, yeah, so this is a pretty huge one for us. So if you've thought about, Kristen's going to present. So if you think about our headquarters, I think some of you have been there and you've seen some of the space constraints, right? And we've mentioned also the move to the Santa Fe Depot. So essentially, we've ran out of space there at South May, our headquarters, right? And so we've been working hand-in-hand with Beck, our architecture and engineering firm, to come in, take a look at our current building, and we believe we have a good set of plans and specifications to go out to bid to essentially remodel the entire 17,000 square feet of our headquarters there. And again, if you think about our current headquarters, so it has essentially been added on as we've grown, and we've grown quite a bit in the past, you know, 10 years or so. And there are offices that are, you know, some are 200 square feet and some are 1,200 square feet. And so with the remodel, we are kind of consolidating that space and making it much more efficient. And so Kristen's going to present just a reminder of what that scope of work looks like, and turn it over to Kristen real quick.
Good morning. Yes, it's been a minute since we have visited this, so we're just going to do a quick refresh. So here's our existing floor plan at South May. Current concerns that we have are lighting. If you take a tour, you'll notice some people have some really fancy blue film over light, so we're just going to get rid of all of that. Acoustics can be rough in places like the call center. Again, like Jesse was saying, the flexibility of space, it's just, we're just out of space. It's super tight. Space inefficiency, we discussed, and then code compliance. It's a fairly old building. So we're doing construction in two phases. So this is the first phase. That'll be done, let's see, we're moving everybody over to the left-hand side of the building that you can see, and we'll be remodeling the right-hand side of this building. And then phase two, after the right-hand side has been remodeled, everybody can move back over there. Again, it's super helpful that a lot of people have already moved to Santa Fe Station, so we can be flexible. I think the original plan was to do construction in like four phases, which means more time, more money, so more efficient this way. And then here's the final floor plan. You can see, again, if you've been to the building, it's quite a labyrinth. The hallways are totally weird and random, so this is more of a square format, very easy to get around. Again, the offices will be standardized. We have some open spaces here for when the future of the building, it becomes a training center, so it's easy to take down cubicle walls instead of like, you know, hard gypsum walls. So that's where we're at. So like Jesse said, we're putting the documents out to bid, so we're at phase, what, timeline number two, sorry, not phase one. And then you can see the budget below. Again, here are a couple of renderings that were put together by Beck. So this is the front lobby. And then here's the employee lounge and the break room. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments? It's exciting.
Yeah.
And something that you've been planning on with moving the, a lot of the administrative offices down to Santa Fe Depot.
Yep.
Chairman, if I can add just a few more details there. So there is an error in your packet that has since been corrected. So it's the bid opening date. So in your packet, it mentions February 3 is the bid opening date. That doesn't quite meet the criteria to have 21 days for the bidding cycle, and so we've moved that to February 19, so it's a following Wednesday. So that's a slight change there, but all of that's been corrected in bid sync and what's going out to our contractors. And then one final comment is there are two, or I'm sorry, four deduct alternates. And so what that means is our contractor will provide a price for the base bid, but then they'll also provide a price for these deduct alternates. And so some of those are an operable partition. So if you, if you remember the floor plan, we have that large training area, and the base bid included an operable partition that runs between those two, so we could essentially separate that into two conference areas. So this deduct alternate would essentially take that partition wall out. The other deduct alternate is our restroom partitions, and so our base bid includes, it's called phenolic, which is essentially a plastic that has the coloring all the way through the partition. The deduct alternate there is a slightly lesser plastic partition, still comparable, still, you know, good maintenance qualities and things like that. The other one is the wall tile height in the restroom. So our base bid has wall tile height going from floor to ceiling. That deduct alternate would have it lowered on the, it's called the non-wet walls, so essentially the three walls, the other three walls in the restroom. And then the final one is the breeze wall. Kristen, if you can go to the next one, next.
Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, so that decorative breeze wall in the employee lounge, the deduct alternate is to take that wall out. So again, we, you know, we've seen construction pricing kind of fluctuate, and we've definitely seen an increase, and so that's just allows us to have some fallback options.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Exciting times. What's the timeline on the project, then?
So Beck is thinking about eight months total for construction, eight or nine months.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds good. Okay, is there a motion to approve item A? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Okay, item B is the approval of a request for qualifications for public art for the Sheridan Walker parking garage mural and authorize the administrator to advertise it.
Yeah, another exciting project for us. So I think everyone's familiar with the Sheridan Walker Garage over here off of Sheridan Walker. A few years back, it had a mural that was installed on there. As, as murals do sometimes, the weather has essentially deteriorated the mural, and so we got together with the Art Commission and they went out and we did a study of the current condition, and what we have found is that it is, is no longer viable. It has gone beyond repair. And so what this RFQ does is it goes out and essentially establishes three separate scenarios. This was presented to the Parking Commission back in November, and the recommendation is to move forward and request qualifications for all three scenarios. And so in your packet, if you turn over a few pages, it walks through those three different scenarios. So scenario one is essentially coming in and removing the entire mural and putting down a base coat, basically a primer that would take care of the entire mural, and then coming back and replacing the entire mural. Scenario two is, again, taking care of the base of the mural, removing the entire mural, but the replacement mural would be a slightly smaller version of what's currently there. And then finally, the final scenario, again, taking care of the entire base, but then, again, a slightly smaller version of the existing mural. And so then, if just thinking about timelines here, so we're going to put out the RFQ. There'll be a selection process, so there'll be essentially a selection committee that looks at those qualifications, will attempt to narrow that down to three qualified artists, and then they'll come in and they'll present some recommendations for that artwork. And so our first selection committee meeting is scheduled for February 25, and that's the when we'll really start to see the ball rolling on that, February 25 of this year.
Okay, are there any comments or questions? This is a band that runs all the way along the south and east side of the structure.
Yeah, replacing the existing mural.
In order to enhance its beauty.
That's right.
It's a parking garage.
Yep.
The concrete parking garage.
Keep that world-class parking garage status.
I don't know what's possible because we're so early in the, is this on? Hang on. Oh, good, there we go. I don't know what's possible since we're so early in the process in terms of the actual art itself. However, my memory stretches back to Chairman Kaufman being one of the huge advocates for that art happening at all. I think both of us, right at the same time, were like, there should be something to like spice up this parking garage. And, you know, I just think it's, it really makes this stretch of Walker, along with the bike lanes, and you have the Civic Center, and you have us, and the parking garage over here with the Arts District. I just think there, it really adds something. So who am I to ever tell an artist what to do with themselves? I think it would be worth our time mentioning his role and his advocacy to that artist. And I don't know what that means in terms of noting him in that art somewhere. I'm not saying we have like a mural of, you know, Chairman Kaufman, but I just feel like there are ways to honor, and that was on my mind when Jesse was telling me about this last night. I mean, that's kind of, I know that sounds so maybe silly, but we hadn't really done something like that, and it wasn't on anyone's really radar. And I think we had been having meetings around that area or something like that, and it just was something that he had championed, and, you know, he served on this, this body for a long time, so worth, worth our consideration.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to approve item two? Item B. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Item C is the approval of a professional service agreement with Walker Consultants to provide parking consulting and auditing services to COPTA for the fiscal year 2025 through 2027. 2025 is a $97,090 authorization and an additional $78,730, totaling $175,820. Jesse?
Appreciate that, yeah. So this is, this is standard practice in the industry, especially in the parking world. So this agreement is with Walker Consultants, and so they would come in and essentially do an audit of our entire operations, and then they would also take a look at our financial reporting and tracking, as well as our standard operating procedures. You know, Corey and his team, they do a fantastic job, but it's always a good standard of practice to have a third party come in and take a look at what you're doing, because there are some things in the industry that we may not be aware of. We want to make sure that we're staying caught up with the industry. And also take a look at our management fees. So one thing I do want to point out is that this agreement is for our audits for fiscal year '25 and '27. It's a five-year agreement, and so the fiscal year '29, we would essentially negotiate a fee for that fiscal year. We'd bring that back to the board for approval for that fiscal year '29 audit.
Okay, are there any questions or comments? Again, the necessary service that adds to our efficiency.
That's right.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Item D is to receive the structural parking garage assessment report completed by Kirkpatrick Forrest and Curtis Engineering of the four parking garages owned by Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority. Jesse?
Yep, thank you. As we continue the theme of today's meeting, looking at parking items, so this is a very, very important item for us, right? So if you think about a parking garage, most of it is concrete, as we've seen with some of Corey's presentations. Most of it is concrete, and so one of the most important things that you can do is make sure that it has that structural integrity, right? And so Kirkpatrick Forrest and Curtis, they came in and took a look at our four parking garages. Again, a reminder, Sheridan Walker Garage, Arts District Garage, our Century Center Garage, and the Convention Center Garage. And when they did that, they came in and took a look at all of the structural components, as well as some of the other minor components that, components that make up a parking garage. And what they did was they categorized those into three separate priorities. Again, priority one being any item that is somewhere in the realm of a structural item. And so priority one repairs would be focusing on repairs of beams, decks, and staircases, as well as any fireproofing or any corrosion that's seen out there, right? So you think about it, there are metal components in a parking garage, and they're often open to the elements, and so we want to make sure that those are still meeting the criteria, and that's those priority one repairs. Priority two repairs would be focusing on structural items and general maintenance, such as traffic coding, joint sealants, and painting. And then the final one there would be in the priority three repairs. Again, those are the non-structural items like painting and flashing repairs. And so what this item does, this receives our report of that. Again, I just want to point out that that report identified that there are no structural deficiencies in any of our garages. And in fact, if you think about it, our Sheridan Walker Garage is, I think it's nearly 40 years old at this point, and is at a very high standard when you look at the national average across the nation with the structural integrity. But essentially, what this report does, it outlines what those priorities are, and then we anticipate bringing an item to the February board meeting to initiate a request for proposals to come in and perform that work.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Typically, in these cases, when we contract with a professional to do this kind of assessment, do we allow them to participate in the RFP for the same? Or is there, do we have a policy of not, of not allowing the people doing the assessment to also participate in the RFP?
Yeah, I'll double-check with our procurement policy, but it makes, makes good sense if they were the ones on the ground looking at the report, doing the inspections, that they have some input in it, yeah.
Well, the question is being that there may be a conflict of interest if they, if they're, have a chance of being, of winning the bid for the repair work, having, you know, possibly identifying.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
You know, I'm not saying that didn't happen in this case, but I'm just saying that in general, it might be a good policy to.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Item D is to receive the structural parking garage assessment report completed by Kirkpatrick Forrest and Curtis Engineering of the four parking garages owned by Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority. Jesse?
Yep, thank you. As we continue the theme of today's meeting, looking at parking items. So this is a very, very important item for us, right? So if you think about a parking garage, most of it is concrete, as we've seen with some of Corey's presentations. Most of it is concrete. And so one of the most important things that you can do is make sure that it has that structural integrity, right? And so Kirkpatrick Forrest and Curtis, they came in and took a look at our four parking garages. Again, a reminder, Sheridan Walker Garage, Arts District Garage, our Century Center Garage, and the Convention Center Garage. And when they did that, they came in and took a look at all of the structural components, as well as some of the other minor components that make up a parking garage. And what they did was they categorized those into three separate priorities. Again, Priority One being any item that is somewhere in the realm of a structural item. And so Priority One repairs would be focusing on repairs of beams, decks, and staircases, as well as any fireproofing or any corrosion that's seen out there, right? So you think about it, there are metal components in a parking garage, and they're often open to the elements. And so we want to make sure that those are still meeting the criteria. And that's those Priority One repairs. Priority Two repairs would be focusing on structural items and general maintenance, such as traffic coding, joint sealants, and painting. And then the final one there would be in the Priority Three repairs. Again, those are the non-structural items, like painting and flashing repairs. And so what this item does, this receives our report of that. Again, I just want to point out that that report identified that there are no structural deficiencies in any of our garages. And in fact, if you think about it, our Sheridan Walker Garage is, I think it's nearly 40 years old at this point, and is at a very high standard when you look at the national average across the nation with the structural integrity. But essentially, what this report does, it outlines what those priorities are. And then we anticipate bringing an item to the February Board Meeting to initiate a request for proposals to come in and perform that work.
Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Typically, in these cases, when we contract with a professional to do this kind of assessment, do we allow them to participate in the RFP for the same? Or is there... Do we have a policy of not allowing the people doing the assessment to also participate in the RFP?
Yeah, I'll double-check with our procurement policy, but it makes good sense if they were the ones on the ground looking at the report, doing the inspections, that they have some input in it, yeah.
Well, the question is being that there may be a conflict of interest if they have a chance of winning the bid for the repair work, having, you know, possibly identifying...
I see what you're saying, yeah.
Not saying that that happened in this case, but I'm just saying that in general, it might be a good policy to contract with an agency who does not have an opportunity to bid for the RFP for the repairs during the assessment.
I follow you. Yeah, so KFC, they're engineering firms, so they're not going to be the ones performing the work, but they'll likely participate in the inspections of the work and things like that.
Any other questions or comments? I know that I can think back, history-wise, we didn't have the money to do some of this, and the maintenance got deferred and it piled up. And it's nice that we can review this on a regular basis, and we have the reserves to go in and make the repairs necessary to keep the garages in good condition. So this is great. So is there a motion to receive the report? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Item E is to approve settlement agreement with Progressive Northern Insurance Company and Paul Kinsey arising from a claim filed by the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority against Progressive due to Kinsey hitting an Oklahoma City street car on October 4th, 2023, in the amount of $16,555.05, and authorizing the chairman to sign the release, which fully resolves the claim, and to avoid litigation, and/or to enter into executive session if anybody would like to do that. But I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the settlement. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Moving to Item Seven, which is ratification of claims and payroll... Excuse me. For vendor and payroll claims for the period of December 1st through December 31st, 2024. Is there a motion to ratify these? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Item Eight is to receive our financial reports for the COPTA Schedule of Revenue and Expenses Budget to Actual for the month ending November 30th, 2024. Suzanne?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everyone today on this cold morning? Yeah, exactly. We all had a little coughs going on here. Well, since we are pretty close to our next board meeting, I'm going to keep my presentation brief. If you could pull that up, thank you very much. This information dates back to November, so in two weeks, we'll have some new information for you. So I will keep my comments brief, but as always, happy to answer any questions that you may have on your financial statement that's in your packet. So we'll just start with the transportation operations, which is Page Two of your packet. So again, this is five months into our fiscal year, ending November 30th. So in transportation, the expenditures exceeded revenues by $644,000. Our overall year-to-date revenues are $18,840,000, so we are ahead of budget on our revenues by 3%. Our year-to-date expenditures are $19,484,000, and those are under budget by less than 1%. So you might wonder if we're... If our expenditures exceed our revenues, yet we're on track with our budget. At this point in the year, sometimes our budgeting, we do anticipate that we will be a little bit under with our revenues to cover those expenditures, but we have fund balance. And so that's some of the ebb and flow of timing of revenue. And so even though we've budgeted that we would be a little bit behind on our revenues, that's pretty typical for us. So I'll dive into a couple of rows here on the revenue. Let's look at fare box, fare media sales. I have those highlighted at the top here. So again, I like to look at it from a combined standpoint, because looking at our fare overall is what really we need to be looking at, because some of this media sales, that's going to be like token transit, and then the fare box would be purchasing passes on the actual bus. So overall, if you look at it combined, we are right at 3% below where we had budgeted this point in time. So our year-to-date budget for those two rows is $925,000, and our combined actuals is $895,000. So about $30,000 below budget. However, we are ahead from prior year. If we looked at those combined as well, we're ahead $43,000 from prior year. And then on down at the very kind of bottom of this slide here, the other agencies' participation. As a reminder, this particular line item is comprised of revenue from our partnership with the Arnol Foundation, as well as it includes the revenue from Midwest City and Rose State for Route 15. So there's a few sources of revenue in this line here. So the revenue on the Arnol side that I mentioned, that shows up in this line item, is solely based on expense reimbursements. So if we have an expense, we invoice, and then we get reimbursed. So if we're below revenue, which we are a little bit below revenue in this line, it is just because our expenses are low. So we're just tracking along with those expenditures. We have collected... We're on target to be collecting from Midwest City. However, we have not yet taken an agreement to the Board for Approval for our agreement with Rose State. And so we're a little bit behind on our revenue, since we have not collected from Rose State yet. So those are a couple of contributing factors of us being under budget in this line item for our revenues. And then on the expense side, so personal services is one we talk about often. We are over budget by $565,000 in this line item. I would point out, so since this is a month of November, a holiday month is going to be a month that we often will run hot, because we are going to have people on vacations. That's when overtime ramps up, because we have people covering other people's work. We also have premium pay for holiday pay. So those are factors that do cause our salaries and wages to go up. So we are a little bit over budget by 5% in that line item. And we'll continue to monitor our personal services. Right now, we have no cause for concern on our budget, but we'll continue to look closely at that. So moving over to parking operations, which is Page Four, our revenues exceed expenditures by $1 million. Our overall year-to-date revenues are $2.6 million, and so they're under budget by less than 1%. So almost spot-on with our revenues where we thought we'd be this point in time. And our year-to-date expenditures are $1.5 million, and those are under budget by 12%. So looking at our revenues, we have just one I'll highlight for you today, the events and transient parking. So you'll see that we are under budget from where we thought we'd be this point in time by $207,000, which is about 16% from our budgeted revenue. So I mentioned this last month, and I'll just kind of one of those things again, is we're waiting on some revenue that we're collecting from one of our major contributors of our event parking, or major purchasers, I should say, of our event parking. So we have received that revenue in December. So next month, we will be caught up... We anticipate being caught up on our event and transient revenue. Moving over to river cruises, I'm just going to hit the highlights here. So our revenues exceeded expenditures by $91,000. Our year-to-date revenues are $447,000, which exceed our budget by 6%. And our year-to-date expenditures are $356,000, and our expenditures are under budget by 5%.
Suzanne, if you could go back to parking, on events and transient parking, I noticed we're $631,000 under last year at the same time.
Right.
What's the explanation for that?
So it's really the same explanation. So last year, we received that revenue from that major customer in an earlier month. And so that puts us just behind on our timing. So I'd expect next month, we're caught right back up with where we were prior year.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And then finally, streetcar operations. I do have a correction to note on this slide. It says expenditures exceed revenues. That's actually incorrect. It's an important correction, because in fact, our revenues exceed our expenditures, which is a much better talking point. So our revenues exceed our expenditures by $480,000. Our overall year-to-date revenues are about $3 million, right on budget. And our year-to-date expenditures are under budget by $2.5 million, 15%. So streetcar is performing quite well at this point in time. So those are my slides for you, but happy to answer any questions on the statements themselves.
Can we go back to... Thank you, Steve. Can we go back to the bus revenue slide?
Sure.
I'm just a little confused still on that one.
This transportation revenue slide?
Yeah. You were mentioning that there's a timing issue. Could you help me understand that again? I'm sorry, how do we get to the expenditures exceeding the revenues?
Oh, on the expense side or the revenue?
On the expense side, right?
Okay, so this slide here where we talked about payroll?
So if you go back, even the one before this, where how much was it?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're that much, $644,000. Help me understand, again, that number.
Okay. Right, like our budget being... We budget revenue less than our expenditures. Is that the clarifying point?
If that is the clarifying point.
Yes. So yes, at this point in time, so you look here, the year-to-date revenues are $18.8 million. That's what we budgeted. We budgeted year-to-date expenditures at $19.48 million. So that's just really when we're expecting revenues coming in. So we have some of the unpredictable, I'll say, timing revenues, or things like our state subsidy, some of the things I mentioned in that other participating agencies, where we've got some agreements with some interlocal agreements, where we're waiting on those invoices to be paid. So when we set our budget, we're looking at it every month, like, when do we think revenues are going to be coming in? We're not looking at it for the whole year. We still think we're going to hit our revenue goal for the entire year, but when we're looking at it month at a time, that's when timing starts to come in. And so we look at it to say, hey, you know what? I don't actually think we're going to get that revenue in November. We're probably going to get it in January. So we move that forecast a couple of months ahead when we really think that revenue is going to come in. So it doesn't take away from the fact we're going to get the revenue, it just adjusts the timing of when we think we'll be getting that revenue, so.
I appreciate that clarification or revisiting of the issue, because when I was looking at the... I'm so used to it being the federal grants that are a bit off, and then to see that they weren't. I was like, wait, what am I missing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're really on pace. I didn't highlight it, but our federal grant revenue, we really kind of adopted a system of trying to make it a very predictable amount that we're doing a draw on, so that our revenues are coming in at a steady pace. It's certainly a lever that we have if we need to draw more, but right now, we're doing okay. We're keeping our pace with that. So it just kind of makes it more predictable with our budgeting and forecasting.
Suzanne, I was going to ask you on the revenue on parking, had we budgeted not to have any revenue on the Prairie Surf space in the second half?
I believe at the point in time when we put this budget together, I'm going off of memory, which is... That was a year ago. I don't believe... I think we already knew at that point the sale of the garage, so I believe we would have scaled back on that revenue from Prairie Surf at that point in time.
So the budget should reflect the decrease in...
Right, I'm getting a head nod. So that was a year ago, and I'm pretty sure that's the case, but it looks like, yes. In fact, we did at that time know that we would... That parking customer would be leaving us, so yes.
I have a question on this page for the Personnel Services. Seeing that we often, or historically will, have an increase during November and December of overtime for holidays, should we build that into our budget? I know that it's probably based off of salaries and fully staffed for the year, but if we already know that there are times of the year which will have overtime, can we build that in?
Yeah. So we do typically look at which months we're going to have multiple pay... Every month has two payrolls. There's two months a year that has three. So we'll look at it from that point of view. But I agree, I do think we need to adjust on the months that have those holidays, because we know we're going to get it a little bit higher there. There's also variables, though, that we can't necessarily always predict, which has to do with our staffing levels right now. We have very few vacancies, which, of course, is a great thing for us and a great thing for our customers, but that can impact our salaries and wages as well, and just the timing of it.
I think for budgeting purposes, if we assume full staffing and then work in, you know, some of those known or at least predictable increases.
Right. So our overall budget does include all the positions. They're fully... They're full cost. And so then, as far as like the month-by-month of it, that's where that variation comes in, so.
Wonderful. Okay.
I love the question, so if there's any others, happy to answer them.
We appreciate your report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there a motion to receive our financial reports? It's been moved and seconded. Motion passes. Moving on to our program reports, our Mobility Management Services Report. Jesse?
Yeah, so I will be filling the role of Dr. Marilyn Dillon today. So Dr. Marilyn Dillon and also Eugene Fritz are at the office, so I'll be presenting both program reports today. So Mobility Management Services, so let's jump into it. So our senior services continue to thrive, and we continue to provide this service very, very well. You can take a look at some of the big ones here, right? So our daily mill sites, providing 5,291 trips there. Our adult day services, 8,719 trips. So this continues to grow, and we continue to manage this and provide that service. Our next one here is our community development programs. So again, this is some of our low-income bus passes. With the last year, we provided 18,431 bus passes, 24 sheriff trips, and 17 emergency taxi trips. And so a big note here is, if you remember the item that we took to our Board, I believe it was a month or so ago, additional budget allocation for that bus pass program. And so we anticipate that award happening in, essentially, here in about the next week. And so we definitely anticipate that bus pass program to increase, thanks to the additional funding, and again, thanks to this Board to provide that. Living our core values. So want to give a huge shout-out here to Jennifer Smith. So she won this award. She also was our bus rodeo winner. She was, I believe, was in Tampa, where she went and she competed, and she placed there in that bus rodeo. But the main reason for this slide here is Jennifer Smith was awarded the Courage Courier Award from Palomar. So Jennifer is our operator with the Palomar Group, providing those trips. And just really drives home the fact that some of our operators, the impact that they have on the community, just that one-on-one impact that they have. And Jennifer, if you ever get a chance to meet her, you'll feel the same way. She's one of those folks that, when you see her, she gives you a hug and just makes you feel like part of the family. So it's really, really value her being part of our group. Again, one of our community partners there with Reemerge, Hope House, and Palomar. So we provided, or we've provided to date, a little over 5,000 trips with those three programs. And again, changing our community and providing those services for folks that are in that need. And then our climb ride program continues to thrive, our child welfare program, working with Oklahoma County, serving over 100 families and over 2,500 trips. And then the transition age youth, providing a little over 300 trips and serving up to 50 youth there. So one of the important things to note here is that our staff are actually embedded at these offices, right? And so they are there, they are partnered with these offices, and are really providing a service that nationally recognized, right? So I think Marilyn has mentioned that several times. We've had other agencies reach out to us, because they've seen what these programs can do, and they've reached out to us and asked if we could help partner with them to provide these types of programs in their communities as well. Embark Well continues to thrive. Again, this is our program that provides services to the YMCA locations, our city parks, and partnering with our MAPS3 Senior Health and Wellness Centers, providing nearly 3,000 trips for FY '24, '25 so far. And then our 5310 Funding Stream, so this program continues. An important note there is that part of this program is setting up a, basically, a community where folks can come together and talk about their projects. And we've had a few of those meetings now. And in the past, we had... There was very little engagement when those meetings would happen, when it was in the previous office. Since we've taken it over, we've seen over 30, I believe the number's, over 35 agencies take part in those community meetings. And so we're seeing a lot of folks now engaged in this program, and so we're looking forward to continuing this program. And then finally, here are Mobility Software Projects. So again, we've talked about this. This Board approved that contract with EcoLane, where we're coming in and taking a holistic look at our scheduling software. And so we're in the midst of essentially standing this up right now, and we anticipate a launch that Go Live date has actually been pushed back to a little bit later in February. Again, this is going to be a game changer for us when it comes to our scheduling software, so we'll be able to co-mingle those trips, right? And so really maximizing the efficiency of our services. And that is Mobility Management Service Program Update. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Good report.
Good report.
Thank you. Our other program report is our Safety, Security, and Training Report. And Jesse?
Yep. Got them pulled up real quick. So I'll be...
So I'll be, I'll be playing Chief Safety Officer today. Never claimed to be one, but we'll see how it goes. All right, so again, filling in for Eugene Fritz, our Chief Safety Officer, so we'll be talking about our embark safety. I do want to point out that Mr. Fritz had a much more robust presentation. I actually trimmed it down, but we'll go ahead and jump into it. So we have been partnering with ODOT and our State Safety Oversight to take a look at our Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan. It's transit, so we like a good acronym, also known as our PTAS. So this board is aware of that, that program, that PTAS. So this essentially sets our safety standards for us as an agency. There have been several meetings, and there's been several FTA rulings that have come out that have made changes to our agents, or I'm sorry, to our State Safety Oversight program standard, and part of that is adopting those changes into our agency safety plan. So we've been working very, very close with ODOT and our State Safety Oversight contact there, and we anticipate bringing our updated PTAS to this board here shortly with those updates. And so wanted to show this slide real quick. So this shows some of those updates that are coming. Again, these are passed down from the FTA. A couple of the important ones here are risk-based inspections. And so in the past, we would go out and we'd do a safety audit, taking a look at some of our routes, or specifically like the streetcar, taking a look at that route and identifying or inspecting things. Well, now, with those inspections, we have to, we have to rate it, right? So we have to use our risk criteria to rate that. And this is an important one for us, and it has some pretty significant impact on how we do business. And so we've been, again, we've been working very close with our State Safety Oversight to make sure that we're getting those items incorporated into our PTAS. And then, let me actually go back one. And one, final one there is on the left side there, the OKC Streetcar, that bottom one. So the 49 CFR 674 State Safety Oversight, the changes to definitions and reporting requirements for safety events. So in the past, essentially anything that happened on our streetcar alignment required what's called a two-hour notification, and in the past, that required a phone call to our State Safety Oversight. And, you know, we followed that protocol very, very closely. With this new update, there is, essentially eases that restriction just a little bit. We still have to report items to our State Safety Oversight, but the reporting criteria has gotten a little bit wider, or I guess actually smaller, so not as many things get reported to our State Safety Oversight. We're still tracking everything and making sure that we're following the guidelines there, but they've also eased the way that we can report that. So in the past, it was a phone call. Now we simply fill out a form, and it gets submitted to our State Safety Oversight. And then finally, again, our, our safety and security team is also in charge of our training for our staff when it comes to CDL training and operations and maintenance training. And so just wanted to show this quick little slide here, just to show in, in 2024, the staff that were trained, our training team. Our training team is made up with Byron and Tavis. If you haven't met them, they are an absolute pleasure to hang out with. Byron often gets called our shepherd at embark. Again, so he comes in, they come in, our staff comes in, they go through the training program, they're with Byron and Tavis for essentially the first two to three weeks that they're at embark. And so they, they really get that connection when they're there with Byron and Tavis. And again, Byron is often called our shepherd, and so a lot of times, if someone has a question or a concern, they'll often go to Byron. He's, he's been with us for a while now, and just a fantastic person to be a part of our team. So that is our embark safety update. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments on our safety report? If not, is there a motion to receive all of our program reports? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote electronically. Motion passes. Moving on to item 10, which is items from the trustees. First of all, thank you all for accommodating, rescheduling this meeting so that we could move items along that we had in our planning process and necessitating a special meeting since we were deferred from, by the weather here a week or so ago. So anyway, starting with Robert.
Just a question. Oh, sorry. Just a question on terms, and if we be looking at re-upping terms. I think our terms are set to expire in February typically, but I didn't see any items on the, on the agenda to address the terms, so just bringing that to attention.
Hold it for you. Yeah, so we'll, we'll work on that. We'll get back with you on that. Good point.
Okay.
Okay. Meg? Right? Jason? Jesse?
I do, yeah. So a couple of things. So I wanted to make mention first, we, I forgot to mention it when we brought the item up earlier, but we do have members from the BEC team here in the gallery. And so I just wanted to publicly thank them for all the work that they've done with us. We've been working very, very close with them, and they've been a great partner with us through this entire process of taking a look at our admin facility and that remodel project. So again, thank you guys, appreciate your, your hard work. The other item is, I think I've mentioned it to this board, but I just wanted to point it out one more time, that the Urban Land Institute has nominated for, nominated the Rapid Northwest for the Impact Award for Outstanding Public Impact. And so we're in great company with that award or with that nomination. And so the Almonte Library, the Village Civic Center, and the Bill Atkins Park are also nominated for that Public Impact Award. So the, the actual award ceremony is scheduled for February 7th at 5:30 PM. So if anyone's interested in joining us there, just reach out to me. We'll make sure we make that happen. And then finally, I wanted to point out one of the services that we provide with our fixed route system. So, you know, obviously, as the weather has gotten much colder, we've partnered with the Planning Department and also our, our warming shelters and our overnight shelters. And so if you think about it, right, as the temperatures drop below 32 degrees, they often open up the day shelters, the warming shelters, for those that are unhoused and need to get in and out of the, out of the elements. And of course, we have the overnight shelters. And so the way that works typically is we have at least one bus, sometimes two, that run a shuttle service between them. So if you think about it, so overnight, folks are there in those, in those shelters, and then in the morning, they essentially close those overnight shelters, but they also have the day shelters. And so we run that shuttle service between the overnight shelters to the day shelters so that folks can get in and out of the elements, especially when it's as cold as it has been for the last few weeks. So we've been running that shelter, or I'm sorry, that shuttle service now for, I think it's where we're almost a month now, on and off, as, as the weather drops below those 32 degrees is when they initiate those, those day shelters.
That's a good service.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, if there's not anything else, then we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.